Everyone, the time is now 9:44 a.m. And a quorum of the Board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of December 13, 2022 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items Board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Ms. Lipton?
Yes, I would like to add two resolutions that came from the legislative-
Why don't we do one at a time, please? Thank you.
Yes, I would like to, yes, I would like to add to the agenda a resolution on transparency in charter schools.
So we have a motion to move a resolution on charter school transparency. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from President Albrecht. We've moved from Ms. Lipton, second from President Albrecht. Any discussion? Ms. Lipton, to you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rice. This is a resolution that was brought to the Legislative Committee by Dr. Albrecht. This is something that we have discussed at this board table. Had several hearings, presentations, and we took it up at the Legislative Committee, and question.
Very good. Would you like to read it into the record, please? Because it's quite extensive. You drafted it, it seems to me, at least the initial draft. It's quite comprehensive.
Yes, thank you. S- SBE Resolution on Charter School Transparency. Whereas the State Board of Education is charged in the Michigan Constitution with general oversight and supervision of public education in Michigan, whereas Western Michigan University Professor Dr. Gary Miron presented to the State Board of Education on April 13, 2021, regarding obstacles to receiving documents from certain public school academy districts, hereafter referred to as quote charter schools or quote charter school districts in Michigan pertaining to their financial structures and relationships with charter management organizations, CMOs. Whereas the State Board of Education voted on June 8, 2021, to prepare a Freedom of Information Act FOIA request on charter school financial transparency. Whereas at the direction of the SBE president, Dr. Cassandra Albrecht sent a Freedom of Information Act FOIA letter on January 5, 2022, to several charter school districts and traditional public school districts pertaining to contracts with third-party vendors, including CMOs. Whereas Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garant, Financial Specialist Christopher May, and Special Assistant to the State Superintendent Alessand Shrewsbury presented to the SBE on September 13, 2022, regarding the responses to the FOIA from the charter school districts and traditional public school districts, including a summary of the documents received therefrom. Whereas there are 295 active charter school districts in Michigan and at least 239 are run by for-profit corporations, with Michigan having a higher percentage of charter schools run by for-profit CMOs than other states and nation. Whereas many CMOs operate under a quote sweep contract whereby they assume and manage the majority, if not all, of the charter school district's operating budget. Whereas CMOs use taxpayer dollars to manage charter schools, both CMOs are not legally required to provide audited financial statements to the state or its taxpayers, a legal limitation that prevents the public from understanding with the same degree of specificity how the funds of traditional public school districts and those afforded to public school academies are spent. Whereas many CMOs also engage in lease agreements with affiliated real estate holding companies, in which the CMO has a connected relationship with the lessor, some agreements resulting in contracts where 15% or more of the charter school's state school aid revenue is spent on lease agreements. Whereas in May 2013, the State Board of Education called for legislation addressing excessive lease agreements between CMOs and charter school boards, resulting in unusually high profit margins for CMOs and their real estate holding companies. Whereas in FY '21, 90.4% of charter schools reported that more than 50% of the school's current operating expenditures were spent on purchase services, for ends totaling $1.3 billion in purchase services, resulting in those expenditures not being reported and audited with the same level of details provided for expenditures of traditional public school districts, and not subject to public disclosure under FOIA. Whereas in March 2022, HB 5846, SB 928, were introduced to require CMO contracts to include annual audited financial statement provisions. Whereas in March 2022, HB 5853, SB 927, were introduced to require CMOs to provide annual audited financial statements for authorizers to account for any fees collected to oversee charters. Whereas in March 2022, HB 5856, SB 929, were introduced to require all schools to post annual student recruitment costs. Whereas in March 2022, HB 5849, SB 936, were introduced to subject CMOs to FOIA. Now therefore be it resolved that in light of the state legislature having ended its current legislative session, the State Board of Education urges the reintroduction and passage of the aforementioned bills in the next legislative session, and be it also further resolved that the State Board of Education urges legislation that ensures charter schools and their CMOs are as transparent in the use of taxpayer money as traditional public school districts by requiring that every CMO, regardless of whether it is a for-profit or not-for-profit company, produce and electronically post an audited report of its use of all public funds, including information related to salaries, benefits, and contracts.
We have a motion. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. We have a motion. We have a second. We've had the resolution read into the record. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? This is simply to put the resolution on the agenda. Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote to put the resolution on the agenda.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other additions to the agenda? Any other?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
I would like to make a motion to add the resolution to improve educational opportunity for youth and foster care to the agenda.
We have a motion from Ms. Tilly, a second from President Albrecht. Discussion, Ms. Tilly, to you to read into the record, please.
Do you want me to give background, or do you want me to just read it?
If you could read it and then give any background that you'd care to share.
Thank you.
Yep.
Whereas youth living in Michigan Congregate Care and Juvenile Justice Facilities are often denied the opportunity to learn and be educated in credit-bearing educational programs that guide students toward high school graduation and post-secondary opportunities. And whereas many youth are not aware that these classes are not credit-bearing and become discouraged once they try to transfer credits to a credit-bearing school, they may have lost one, two, or three years of high school. Some youth that have plans to go to college or into post-secondary programs simply give up. And whereas youth in Michigan Congregate Care and Juvenile Justice Facilities are systemically facing obstacles to graduation, with only 39.51% earning a diploma or GED certificate by age 19, compared to 80.47% of public high school students overall. And whereas children and youth of color in Michigan are more likely to be placed in institutions and in the most restrictive settings to stay there for long periods of time, and to age out of the foster care system without a family. As a result of these experiences, Black and Brown children and their families are at greater risk for negative health, social, and economic effects. Michigan's Child Welfare Improvement Task Force 2021. And whereas children and youth who are part of a minority group face even greater odds, as they are more likely to have unmet social and emotional learning needs, and are less likely to have advocates that speak on their behalf. And whereas Section 380.10 of Michigan's Revised School Code establishes parents as partners in their children's education and ensures a positive educational setting. However, children and youth, under Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, supervision have non-traditional parents, and the Michigan Department of Education, MDHHS, and Child Welfare Court must provide information about a student's education to the child's legal parent as appointed by court, which may or may not include the biological parent. And whereas Congregate Care and Juvenile Justice Facilities should ensure that every child is enrolled in credit-bearing educational programs by either transporting the youth, implementing credit-bearing programs, or partnering with a credit-bearing program. And whereas the Michigan Merit Curriculum states that the Board of a school district or Board of Directors of a public school academy shall provide the opportunity for each pupil to develop an educational development plan during grade seven, and shall ensure that each pupil reviews his or her educational development plan during grade eight and revises it as appropriate before the student begins high school. And whereas the education development plan is required for all learners to help students understand, navigate, and stay on track with their academic requirements and progress, including help to identify both career goals and a plan of action to achieve them, starting at grade seven and updated as student interests and abilities become more focused. And whereas Congregate Care and Juvenile Justice Facilities personnel or contractors should not redefine what adequate and appropriate public education is, as the Michigan Merit Curriculum provides clear guidance on educational requirements needed for high school graduation. And whereas the success of youth in congregation care and juvenile justice facilities is important so that no child falls behind, and every child has the opportunity to become a productive and successful adult. It also coincides with the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, and Governor Whitmer's 60 by 30 Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education strongly supports laws and policies that better support the adequate education and support of Michigan's most vulnerable youth, and asks the legislature to amend laws that will guarantee that vulnerable youth receive credit-bearing educational programming that will keep them on target to receive high school diplomas and allow them to access post-secondary opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Would you care to add anything to that extensive and well-written resolution?
Thank you. I do. I want to thank Sabah for reaching out to me about this. Sabah is with Park West Foundation, and she is, she works very hard in the community and very hard with our foster care youth. And she brought this to my attention, which I was not aware of, that this is happening with youth in foster care facilities. I want to thank you. I reached out to you about this, and you definitely got on top of this. And for bringing Kyle Garant in to help to manage this, I also requested that MDHHS be brought to the table. Kyle facilitated that, and they've been very instrumental in helping to make sure that we come up with some solutions to this. And this is very important, like it says, this is the most vulnerable population. Some of them have lost their parents, you know, and they don't have people or they don't have their parents to fight on their behalf. So definitely want to support them, and it definitely falls in line with our Strategic Education Plan and the Governor's Plan. So definitely would like to see support for this. And thank you for everybody that worked on this through the Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. So we have a motion, we have a second, to put this item on the agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote to place this item on the agenda.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew? Snyder absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Do we have any other motions for consideration for the agenda?
I would like to request that we add, under Item 3C, a resolution honoring Marilyn Schneider.
Marilyn Schneider. Huh. Okay. Would you care to read that into the record?
Do you want a second first?
I would love a second.
There you go.
We have a motion, we have a second, and we're reading into the record.
A resolution honoring Marilyn Mertz Schneider. Let it be known that Marilyn Schneider, fondly known as Mertz to family, friends, and coworkers, will retire as of December 31, 2022, after a distinguished 44-year career with the Michigan Department of Education. Whereas Mertz began her career with the Michigan Department of Education in August 1978 as an entry-level secretary with the Experimental and Demonstrations Program, otherwise known as the Grants Office. Whereas Mertz continued to advance in secretarial positions within the department, serving in grants coordination and procurement from 1983 to 1985, the newly created Early Childhood Education Office from 1985 to 1992, school health programs from 1992 to 2000, and the Office of School Excellence from 2000 to 2002. Whereas Mertz started working in the Board of Education Office as an executive secretary in April 2002, and was appointed as the State Board Executive in December of 2010, where she has continued to serve with distinction and honor for the last 12 years. Whereas Mertz is known to the general public as the person facilitating public comment during board meetings. She is especially skillful at creating a warm and welcoming environment while holding speakers accountable to board rules, and introducing a new phrase during the pandemic as public comment by telephone was allowed when she would ask speakers to "please mute your YouTube in the background." Whereas Mertz is grounded by her faith in God, an active member of St. Joseph's Church in Puamau?
Good job.
Thank you. And an active member of her community, where she annually serves as the master of ceremonies for the Puamau Black Party. Whereas Mertz is also a strong supporter of both the Puamau, Westphalia, Pirets-
Good job, Cassandra.
And the Portland Raiders, and is often found attending and rarely missing sports and other activities of her grandchildren, Austin, Maddie, Autumn, Brooke, Caleb, Peyton, Brooklyn, and Lexi. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education extends to Marilyn Mertz Schneider its highest regard and gratitude for the professionalism, dedication, and expertise that she has brought to the benefit of the children of Michigan, their parents and caregivers, and their schools and districts through her service at the Michigan Department of Education. And be it finally resolved that the State Board of Education wishes Mertz a well-deserved retirement full of happiness, humor, and good health with family and friends.
Thank you.
So that was a lovely resolution. We have the motion, we have a second. This is a vote to put it on the agenda. Okay? We are moving toward an agenda, for those of you out in the listening audience. Any other discussion? Hearing?
I've asked her if she's of age to retire.
We're still working that through the retirement system.
I'm 63.
It's a valid, it's a valid question. Mertz, if we could have a roll call vote to put your resolution on the agenda.
Motion carries. Lipton?
Yeah.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder absent. Tilly? Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have an amended agenda. Could I have a motion for the amended agenda? Dr. Pritchett moving the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Albrecht. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote on the agenda as amended with the three resolutions.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder absent. Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, Ms. Marilyn Mertz Schneider, State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Happy to do so. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice. He is the chairperson of the Board and also State Superintendent. As we go around the table, the President of the Board is Dr. Cassandra Albrecht. She's from Dearborn. The Vice President of the Board is Dr. Pamela Pew from Saginaw. As we move up a level behind Dr. Albrecht and Dr. Pew, we have Ms. Tiffany Tilly. She's Secretary of the Board from West Bloomfield. Behind her is Ellen Lipton, Chair of the State Board's Legislative Committee. She's from Huntington Woods. And as we come back down and across the table, there is a seat for Stephanie O'Day, and she is joining us virtually. She is with the Governor's Office. She's the K-12 Policy Advisor. She holds an ex-officio seat. And next to her is Dr. Judith Pritchett, NASB delegate and SBE, State Board of Education Legislative Committee member. She's from Washington Township. Next to me is Mr. Tom McMillan. He's the Treasurer from Oakland Township. And absent today is Ms. Nikki Snyder. She's on the Board's Legislative Committee. She's from Dexter. And I think I've covered everyone.
Thank you, Mertz. You did that very well. It's like you've had some practice. I'm happy to introduce Ms. Liz Evans, who will begin her full-time duty as State Board Executive as we prepare for the January board meeting. Liz joins us from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Liz, would you like to say a few words?
Just wanted to say I'm excited to be here, and don't know how I'll replace that, but I will do my best. So excited to start the work.
Thank you very much, Liz. The public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/mde. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/mde. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. Today, Board and members of the community, we say a heartfelt thank you to Dr. Cassandra Albrecht and Mr. Jason Strayhorn. These esteemed Board members are being thanked for their service on the State Board of Education. President Albrecht has served two terms on the Board for a total of 16 years. She is the current President, serving in that role since January of 2019, and previously was co-president for two years and vice president for six years. Mr. Strayhorn served on the Board from January 2021 until July 29, 2022. He is known for his respect for all people, leadership skills, and work ethic. Both Dr. Albrecht and Mr. Strayhorn are dedicated public servants who have made sacrifices for the betterment of children and public education. Speaking on behalf of the students and educators in Michigan, we are enormously grateful for the service that they have provided. We will share more words of appreciation during the reception immediately following today's board meeting. But we do have a few agenda items, and parting gifts, I feel like I'm Bob Barker. We have an agenda item, adoption of resolution honoring Dr. Cassandra E. Albrecht. And Madam President, this will be the first time I've told my President that she can't do something, but you may not move your own motion. Who would like to move the motion honoring Dr. Albrecht? Dr. Pritchett, move. Dr. Pew, a second. Any discussion associated there with? We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion associated with the resolution? Who's going to read the resolution into the record?
About the Vice President?
The Vice President would be a terrific person to read it there.
I'd love to. It'd be an honor, my honor.
Oh, wow. That's long. Resolution honoring Cassandra E. Albrecht, Ph.D. Let it be known, Cassandra E. Albrecht was elected to the State Board of Education in November 2006 and re-elected in 2014 to serve a second eight-year term, expiring January 1, 2023. Dr. Albrecht is the current President of Michigan State Board of Education, serving in that role since January 2019, and previously was co-president for two years and vice president for six years. Whereas Dr. Albrecht is a vocal advocate promoting the importance of education and the first in her family to attend college. She earned an associate degree from St. Clair County Community College, a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, and a Master's Degree and a Ph.D. in Communications from Wayne State University in Detroit. Whereas Dr. Albrecht currently serves as the Vice Chancellor for Institutional Advancement at the University of Michigan Dearborn, was Vice President for College Advancement and Community Relations at Macomb County Community College for eight years, where she led the college's marketing and communications, public relations, cultural affairs, and foundation, and was employed at Wayne State University for over 10 years in various administrative positions, including Director of Corporate and Foundation Relations. Whereas Dr. Albrecht was Press Secretary for former U.S. House Democratic Whip Congressman David Bonyer, when she organized a media campaign around student safety and brought Michigan students to Washington, D.C. to take part in a national summit that utilized local media to connect these students to their peers back home in Michigan, which resulted in weeks of positive coverage. Whereas Dr. Albrecht was appointed by the Governor to serve as a Commissioner on the Midwest Higher Education Compact, and as a Board Member for the Education Commission of the States, and she serves as a Board Member of the Network for Public Education and co-chair for Michigan Kids for Our Schools Coalition, and represented the state of Michigan in renewing the Michigan-Taiwan Teacher Exchange Agreement in Taipei. Whereas Dr. Albrecht has been recognized as one of Michigan's 40 Under 40 by Crane's Detroit Business, received the Service to Schools Award from Macomb Intermediate School District, the Liberty Bell Award from the Macomb Bar Foundation, an honorary degree from her alma mater, St. Clair County Community College, and recognition by communities and schools of Michigan for leadership in education and helping Michigan students thrive in and out of the classroom. Whereas Dr. Albrecht has received the Distinguished Service Award from the National Association of State of School Boards, NASB, and has served NASB as a member of the Governmental Affairs Committee and Public Education Positions Committee. Whereas Dr. Albrecht is a volunteer K-9 handler for search and rescue of Michigan Wolverine State Search and Recovery. Whereas Dr. Albrecht served as a Board Member of Detroit Healthy Neighborhoods, President of Women Officials Network Governing Board, Chair of the Automation Ally STEM Education Subcommittee, and a member of Walter P. Ruther Library Advisory Committee. Whereas Dr. Albrecht is a bipartisan leader who has earned the respect of her colleagues through her continuous efforts to reach compromise by listening to all voices, maintains her calm demeanor in the midst of difficult discussions and situations, and seeks to find common ground, and is steadfast in her belief that a system of quality schools includes transparency and oversight with a focus on equitable high expectations for all students. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education extends to Dr. Albrecht its highest regard and heartfelt gratitude for the dedication and expertise that she has brought to the children of Michigan, their parents, and the millions of Michigan citizens whose lives have been enhanced through her efforts. And be it finally resolved that the State Board of Education expresses its fervent wishes that Dr. Albrecht continues to enjoy many rewarding experiences with family, friends, and colleagues.
Thank you.
Very.
Just to make sure there are no hanging chats. Would anybody like to discuss the motion before we vote on it? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, I would just like to thank our President for her leadership, not simply during my four years here, but also her 16. Takes a long time to develop that kind of track record. It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing. You are constantly developing new leadership on the Board, new leadership within the administration. Issues change, contexts change. We appreciate your steadfastness, your responsiveness, your pick-up rate on the telephone is extraordinary. And I know there are times that you see my number coming up, and you do not want to answer it, but you do regularly. And that's part of what makes a strong Board President, that responsiveness, that communication, that willingness to go back and forth, that willingness to problem solve- You've done it with a lot of strength and power, but not with a lot of ego. And I think that's to your credit. So, I want to thank you really for your acceptance of a veteran local superintendent and your mentoring of that veteran local superintendent into a state superintendent. It's very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to share before we vote? Dr. Pugh.
So, whether you think it's good or bad, Cassandra's the reason why I'm at this table.
It's great.
And it's really just been an honor to serve with you, and I've just learned so much from you. And the words that are written on the resolution is an understatement when it comes to you understanding the complex issues and being able to translate that policy into something good for our children and all children. And we've dealt with a lot of very difficult issues at this table. And now, you know, there are times when we've not always seen eye to eye, but again, what has been stated here is so true, is your ability to be able to take all the information and be able to come out with something that's fair and balanced, and just appreciate you beyond words. You're one of the smartest people that I know, and we know that you will continue to do well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Anyone else care to share? Hearing and seeing none. Mertz, please, a roll call vote.
Lipton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Snyder, absent.
Yes.
Ulbricht.
I'm going to abstain, because I don't think it would be appropriate.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much. Congratulations. The next agenda item is Adoption of Resolution Honoring Mr. Jason Strayhorn. May I please have a motion? Move by Ms. Lipton. Do I have a second?
Support.
Move by Dr., second by Dr. Pugh. Any discussion associated therewith? Could we read the motion honoring Mr. Jason Strayhorn into the record?
Does the President want the honors of this?
The President would be terrific.
I would be happy to. Thank you. All right. So, Resolution honoring Jason Strayhorn. Let it be known, Mr. Jason Strayhorn was elected to the State Board of Education in November 2020 and served on the Board from January 1, 2021 until July 29, 2022, and was a member of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn earned his Bachelor's Degree in Business Management from Michigan State University. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn was raised in a family whose top priorities were faith and education, and his father instilled in him that we stand on the shoulders of those who came before us. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn credits his success to his public education and believes that a quality education will be with children for the rest of their lives. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn is from a family of public school educators, such that he has firsthand insight into the successes and challenges within public education. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn values relationships and has the skill set to listen and help people hear each other and work together, and has been privileged to interact with families of every socioeconomic and cultural background. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn is known for his respect for all people, his leadership skills, and his work ethic. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn has shared his talents by mentoring youth. Whereas Mr. Strayhorn was a thoughtful, deliberative, and considerate member of the State Board of Education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education extends to Mr. Strayhorn its highest regard and heartfelt gratitude for the dedication and expertise that he has brought to the children of Michigan, their parents, and the millions of Michigan citizens whose lives have been enhanced through his efforts. And be it finally resolved that the State Board of Education expresses its fervent wish that Mr. Strayhorn continues to enjoy many rewarding experiences with family, friends, and colleagues.
It's for him.
For you.
You don't get a gift.
I don't know if I was supposed to. Are you supposed to open it now, or?
He can. That might be good timing.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
The way he is, I can't.
Yes.
There's an inscription on that, Jason.
Children succeed when we all pull together.
Very nice.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion associated therewith? Hearing and seeing none. If I could just say a few words. Mr. Strayhorn came on the Board two years ago. He was a breath of fresh air in many ways. As someone who's had many school Board members over many years, I recognize someone who's interested in children and someone who's interested in politics solely. And you are clearly interested in young people. You understand the power of education. It was important to you coming up. It's important to your children. It's important to other people's children as well, and you live that on a regular basis. We appreciate your service to the State Board of Education. We know that you're going to find ways to continue to stay involved, not simply in your children's lives, but more broadly in the lives of other people's children in the ensuing decades. We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Want to say a few words?
Well, no, I just, it's really refreshing to get back here and see all of your faces and everything, how much I really miss you guys, you know, until I came back in your presence. It was a tough decision for me, you know. I really didn't get into this before Fane, didn't want to get into this before, obviously. You guys understand that as Board members. And, you know, we had some trying times coming out of the global pandemic, but I think that, you know, we were meant for this. We're battle-tested this Board. You know, I think the strongest part of this Board is the fact that everybody has the compassion and the love to do what's right for the millions of children and staff, support staff, for the public school system in this great state that we live in here, that I have lived in for 30 years of my life. It was very difficult for me, you know, to have to choose for those three children in my own household to make the move out of the state. I miss this state dearly. I miss you all very dearly. And even though the weather is what it is. I wanted to cope. I didn't care. I'm here today. It's nice for me to be here, but I love you guys. I really do. I want to continue to applaud you guys, to be compelled to help all the children that you do help on a daily basis. I think that this is God's work, and I don't take it lightly at all. And I appreciate this. It's one of the words. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Strayhorn. And we have a pending motion on the floor. Marilyn, a roll call vote, please.
Lipton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Snyder, absent. Tilly.
Yes.
Ulbricht.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much. Well deserved. And so, we run the table early. We did read into the record a resolution on Ms. Marilyn Mertz Snyder just a few minutes ago. If I could have a motion to move that resolution.
So moved.
Move by our President, seconded by Dr. Pritchett. Do we have any discussion associated with the resolution? Yes.
I just want to, I'll have more comments to make in the President's report later today, but I just wanted to say thank you to Mertz. In the 16 years I've been here, you've been the constant, the one constant. And you have been more helpful than I think you will ever even know or appreciate in how much we relied on you. And it's going to be a very different world for you guys without her here, but I hope that you know how much all of us appreciate everything that you have done, and you have definitely earned that extra time you're going to have with your family and your grandkids. And we just hope that you don't forget us and make an appearance every once in a while if possible. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to add to that, that in interviewing for this position and then subsequently coming onboard, no one was more professional, more friendly, more welcoming than you from the moment you saw me pacing before my first interview to the second day on the job, when you popped your head into my office and said, "Thank you for coming back." Which is not really what I was expecting. But I think when you get to know Mertz, you realize that you shouldn't expect anything except kindness, that you'll get kindness from her and respect from her. But if you anticipate any particular words coming out of her mouth, good luck with that. Because she's got a series of what Jen Cook would call Mertzisms. And we've grown fond of Mertzisms in the Department. Forty-four years is an extraordinary tenure, and you should reflect back upon that with a lot of pride and a lot of appreciation. You've helped a lot of people along the way, and in so doing, have helped out Michigan public school children along the way. I don't think that that should be lost on what you do on a regular basis. We appreciate you. We know you're going to stay active in rewirements, not retirement, but in rewirement. We know that you'll be active, and we look forward to staying in touch with you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
As a member of the minority for majority of my time here, I'd just like to say that I appreciate everything I've seen, that you have been very fair. And that's something that I've appreciated, among other things, but your fairness has been noted and appreciated.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. If we could have an unusual roll call vote, Mertz, on your resolution.
Lipton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Snyder, absent. Tilly.
Yes.
Ulbricht.
Yes.
Motion carries with thanks. Great. Thank you. Turn around. Go on this.
There you go. Got it. And the first item on the committee of the whole agenda is Presentation on Accountability and Support. This presentation provides information on federal and state accountability systems, identification of schools in need of support to improve learner outcomes, and the ways that the Michigan Department of Education will differentiate support for districts and schools that are identified for comprehensive support and improvement, additional targeted support, and targeted support and improvement, CSI, ATS, and TSI schools respectively. This is an informational presentation. No Board action is required. We welcome our presenters. Dr. Sue C. Carnell, Chief Deputy Superintendent. Dr. William Pearson, Director of the Office of Partnership Districts. Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of the Office of Educational Support. And Mr. Chris Janzer, Assistant Director of the Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability. Superheroes all. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And good morning, State Board of Education members. By way of context of this presentation, I will highlight three activities. One, on May 17, Dr. Pearson and I presented to the Board an overview of the partnership model. Two, on August 9, the Board heard a presentation on Accountability and Support from Mr. Andy Middlestead, Dr. Beryl Pearson, and Dr. Corinne Edwards. In this presentation, we shared our plan to support school districts identified through the accountability system in need of comprehensive support and improvement, additional targeted supports, and targeted supports and improvement. As you are aware, Board, on November 29, the Department released the results of the School Index, which is the federal accountability system. Michigan Department of Education is required to run this federal school accountability system annually in fulfillment of the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 as amended by the Every Student Succeed Act of 2015. It is important to note, for the 2019-20 school year, on behalf of the Department, Dr. Rice requested and received a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education for assessment and accountability requirements. And in 2020, in the 2020-21 school year, the Department was required to administer the assessment only, but not the accountability system. Today, we are here to present to the Board, under the umbrella of accountability and support, the results of the School Index. We will also reshare with the Board how the Department plans to support these schools and districts, understanding to be successful, we need partnerships with the ISDs and LEAs. And now, I will turn it over to Mr. Chris Janzer from the Office of Educational Assessments and Support.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell. Good morning, everybody. I am going to start off with covering our accountability system, which we use to support our schools and districts. So, as Dr. Carnell just mentioned, the Every Student Succeeds Act is federal reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965. ESSA is the nation's education law and represents a longstanding commitment to equal opportunity for all students. ESSA requires that every state establishes statewide accountability systems for all public schools in those states. In our state, this is the index system for accountability. The index system generates a numeric value for each school that then aids in identifying schools for needed supports. We released our 21-22 results just two weeks ago on Tuesday, November 29. We also have an accountability system that is defined by state law. People may remember, this is referred to typically as the A-to-F system. This state system also identifies schools for low performance, such as CSI, Comprehensive Support and Improvement. However, the state law defines CSI differently than does the federal ESSA law. State law also provides no support funding for these schools identified by the state system. So, therefore, we're going to focus the rest of the presentation on the federal side, the federal CSI designation and other support categories. So, getting back to the School Index, I mentioned we use numeric values for those, and we use 0 to 100 index values, which are then generated for almost every public school in the state, and a subset of those schools are then eligible for identification for further supports. Index values are used to determine federally required identifications. So, for example, the lowest 5% of schools with overall index values generally are identified for comprehensive support and improvement. Index values are also generated for each system component, as well as any subgroup in the school meeting minimum N-size requirements. All index values use a percent of target concept. For example, if our proficiency target is 80%, and a school has a proficiency rate of 50%, it gets an index value of 62.5, representing of 50%, it gets an index value of 62.5, representing it achieved 62.5% of that target. This slide shows the breakout of the School Index components and their related weights. If you remember, Michigan's system, as most other states in the country, are weighted heavily towards student growth and student proficiency on state tests. However, we do have components that go beyond academic scores. You can see our school quality and student success indicator has five subcomponents that get towards non-academic indicators. So one of the purposes of the School Index is to identify schools for further supports. The School Index identifies schools into three categories for supports. We have CSI, or Comprehensive Support and Improvement. We have ATS, or Additional Targeted Support. And we also have TSI, Targeted Support and Improvement. This fall, we had, um, we were required to identify new schools in all three categories. And our CSI and ATS schools from previous cycles were eligible to exit that, that category or be retained in those CSI and ATS categories. So this slide shows the entrance criteria and exit criteria for each of those support categories. CSI has four pathways into that identification. These are schools that perform in the bottom 5% of all schools. They may also be schools with graduation rates of 67% or less. And then they could be re-identified, um, schools that didn't exit a previous CSI identification or a previous ATS identification. To exit this criteria, schools essentially no longer meet the entrance criteria, and they show some improvement in proficiency in both math and English language, language arts for two years. For additional targeted supports, ATS, the focus is on schools' subgroups. And schools with subgroups that meet both of these conditions are then identified for additional targeted supports. So these are schools with subgroups within the bottom 25% for each applicable component on the School Index, as well as performing in the bottom 5% overall. Like CSI schools, the exit criteria is similar, where the school subgroup no longer meets ATS entrance criteria, and it's showing improvement in proficiency, again, in both math and ELA for two years. And then finally, the third category, Targeted Support and Improvement, again focuses on schools' subgroups. And these are schools with subgroups that are at, performing at or below the bottom 25% for each applicable component on that school's index report. For exiting this, it's determined by the local district, and it's not reported to the Michigan Department of Education. So, in 2022, we had 64 total schools that exited previous CSI or ATS statuses. Of these, half of them had closed, thus exiting status automatically. However, the other half did meet that exit criteria that I just went over, 11 of which were previously identified for additional targeted supports, so those that had challenges with subgroups. And then 21 schools that were previously identified for CSI met that exit criteria and exited. Schools that didn't meet exit criteria that we had previously identified do get re-identified, as I mentioned. So previously identified ATS schools get re-identified and are put into the CSI category. For previously identified CSI schools that don't exit or don't meet that exit criteria, they continue in that CSI category for another three years. And as required by federal law, they receive more rigorous supports. Okay, so switching gears a little bit, I'm just gonna, the next few slides kind of go through the 21-22 results at the state level, and I provide a little bit of historical context as well. So you can see on this table, we've run the index for, for four cycles now. We had a little bit of a break during the pandemic. And you can see, pre-pandemic, the, the mean or average index value overall for the state was in the mid-60s. We didn't have a lot of movement up or down. Pre-pandemic, the, or, I'm sorry, post-pandemic, the mean index value dropped slightly. And you can also see the number of schools we included dropped slightly as well. The next slide is a little bit of a different look at, looking at the overall distribution of index scores. So again, like the previous slide, you can see the three cycles where we ran this, pre-pandemic, the distribution of overall index scores didn't change all that much, heavily tilted towards the higher end of that index scale, towards 100. Post-pandemic, you can see we had quite a bit of a drop at our, the upper end of the scale, and you can see our lower index values are more frequent. So finally, so the School Index system identifies at the school level, as I've mentioned. However, MDE provides supports at the district level. And I will get to that on the next slide, actually. So here you can see the breakout of the schools that we've identified in previous cycles compared with 21-22. And you can see the TSI schools about doubled. Our ATS schools increased slightly, and our CSI schools also increased quite a bit. But remember that we had re-identified schools fall into the CSI bucket from past cycles. All right. And so here, our offices that provide the supports provide them at the district level. And so our Partnership District Office has 54 districts that contain identified schools for supports. And our, our Office of Educational Support have 119 districts that have schools that were identified for supports by the School Index system. And I will turn it over now to Dr. Bill Pearson to talk a little bit about how the Office of Partnership Districts is providing supports.
You can hit the button.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you, Chris. Partnership districts, supported by the Office of Partnership Districts, are districts having schools in the bottom 5% of the Michigan School Index, and schools with a graduation rate, four-year graduation rate of 67% or below. Districts in a partnership agreement may also have schools identified for CSI that do not meet partnership agreement entrance criteria. For example, alternative education schools, virtual schools, and/or schools identified for ATS or TSI. OPD will support any schools within the district that have been identified for support. Newly identified partnership districts will be assigned to a level of support according to why the district was identified. The levels are intensive, essential, and fundamental. There are 14 partnership districts at the intensive level, 32 partnership districts at the essential level, and eight partnership districts at the fundamental level. Partners required to attend partnership agreement meetings must include the following: local district superintendent or public school academy leader or designee, ISD, RESA superintendent or designee, public school academy authorizer, if applicable, and MDE representatives. Partners required to sign the partnership agreement are listed on this slide. These members are of primary importance in that their understanding of and commitment to the components of the partnership agreement are key to raising student achievement. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson, and good morning, everyone. Districts supported by the Office of Educational Support, or OES, are dis, may have schools identified for CSI that are either alternative ed or virtual schools, meeting one of, more of the following criteria. They're in the bottom 5%, have a four-year graduation rate of 67% or less, were previously identified for CSI and did not exit due to unimproved proficiency, and/or were previously identified for ATS and did not exit ATS, which then converts to CSI. We also have non-alternative ed and non-virtual schools that were either re-identified for CSI, and again, did not exit CSI, but are no longer in the bottom 5%, or previously identified for ATS and did not exit ATS, again, thus converting to CSI. Districts supported by the Office of Educational Support may also have schools identified for ATS. ATS schools have both one or more student subgroups consistently underperforming across components, and one or more student subgroups in the bottom 5% overall. OES-assigned staff will work cooperatively and collaboratively across our units with other offices in the department, as appropriate, and with our local ISD and RESA partners to provide CSI-coordinated support services to districts with identified schools. OES coordinated support services will include regular meetings with district and school leaders to establish rapport and develop a collaborative approach to address the reason or reasons for CSI support identification. Coordination of services between local ISD and RESA's and other MDE offices to customize wraparound services to address the needs of districts with identified schools. Guide the revision of each school's annual improvement plan to include CSI-specific ESSA-required items, including evidence-based interventions to address the specific area or areas of need identified in the comprehensive needs assessment for each school. OES CSI coordinated support services will also include the identification and making accessible to districts and schools a suite of survey tools and resources to address operational, fiscal, and systemic barriers to improvement. Technical assistance and professional development as required in areas of identified need, including the resource allocation review, and conducting annual review and approval of school-level plans, providing guidance as needed for necessary revisions based upon progress monitoring of established goals for improvement. The Office of Educational Support will also provide coordinated support services to districts with schools identified for additional targeted support or ATS. Districts with schools identified for ATS and not in a partnership agreement will be supported as requested by the district, using the same protocols as outlined for schools identified for CSI and supported by OES. Districts with schools identified only for TSI will be primarily supported through universal supports provided by MDE to all districts, plus specific communication regarding TSI. For example, resources explaining the TSI identification and guidance regarding the TSI plan requirement. We thank you for this opportunity to provide this updated presentation and related information. We'll turn it back over to Dr. Carnell, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you very much, presenters. We appreciate the presentation. It's important work. And, Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I have a, just a couple of questions. I'll just refer to the pages. Maybe more in terms of clarification. So on slide four, we talk about the Michigan having an accountability system signed by state law. And I know that this presentation was primarily related to the federal accountability system. The, um, the fact that we have two separate accountability systems, that strikes me as somewhat duplicative. I mean, based on this presentation, it appears that the federal accountability system allows the department to get, um, to get the information it needs in order to harness resources where they're needed. So am I missing something? Does, is there a need for a second accountability system that, at least based on my impression, which is based on a letter grade, that might not? Does the, does the state accountability system give the department any information to harness resources that the federal accountability system does not give you?
You're, you're missing nothing, Ms. Lipton. The second accountability system adds nothing to our general knowledge about children and student achievement and how to improve student achievement. You're missing precisely nothing. Most, most importantly, it does not add to local educators' understanding of how to serve Michigan public school children.
So is there a, and anyone can ask, so is there an additional cost associated with administering this state accountability system that perhaps could be deployed in other areas of the department's activities?
There is, there is time, attention, focus, and a wide range of resources, not simply within the department, but within LEAs and ISDs across the state around the second of the two accountability systems, the state A-through-F system.
So, so a cost associated?
There, there is a cost associated with it, if only implicit, if only an opportunity cost. It gets in the way, and the, the surest way to improve accountability, if you're looking at those two systems, is to get rid of the second. It would be addition by subtraction.
Okay, great. Thank you. On slide number five, where you're describing the, the federal School Index accountability system basics, I assume that this particular index is the same across all the states? In other words, Michigan is, or, or not? Is Michigan doing something different than, than a different state would do?
Yes.
Okay. So all states have the same set of requirements. The way they implement them differs slightly. So Michigan may use 0 to 100 index value, whereas Indiana or Ohio might use letter grades for their system. But generally speaking, the guts of the systems, so to speak, are the same. I mean, states are using proficiency rates, student growth, graduation rates, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Just allowed to sort of, you know, flavor them for their own particular state?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you so much. On slide number six, where you talk about the SQSS having five subcomponents, the, those particular weights, are those weights that are determined by the federal, federal, or the federal government? Or is this something that, the weights that Michigan determined?
These were state-determined. The only federal guidance around accountability system weights was that the student achievement pieces had to comprise the majority of the system weight.
Okay. So this is another example where Michigan has sort of flavored the federal index to be very, very user-friendly for Michigan, in other words?
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Can we just get clarification? When you say the student achievement portions, you are referring to portions associated with the state summit of assessment results?
Correct. Yes.
Right. So that however Michigan and other states choose to cut up their ESSA accountability systems, at least a majority has to be related to that state summit of assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Then on slide number eight, where we talk about the exit criteria, I just wanted to make sure I understand where, for example, for example, there's some indication that some improvement in proficiency in both math and ELA for two years to exit. Is there a further definition to some? Or is that, you know, greater than, you know, 0.001, let's say?
Yeah, so we're looking for basically positive impacts to schools' proficiency rates, so.
Okay, okay. So, as long as there's some upward trajectory, or any upward trajectory, okay.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. And then on slide number 10, where we talk about non-exiting schools that receiving rigorous support as required by federal law. I guess my question is, in your opinion, do you feel that these more rigorous supports, or the supports in general, that they're adequately funded? Do you feel that there is, I mean, I understand that additional dollars are coming in, but do you feel that it's sufficient or adequate? I saw, is that a no?
That is a no.
Okay.
Some of the supports that we need to service school districts come from the state legislature. So, for example, for partnership districts, there's a funding source, 21F, and it's about $6.1 million. And of that $6.1 million, it goes to Bill Shop for the liaisons to work with the school districts. As we have expanded, or as the number of schools have increased this time, the $6.1 million is not enough to handle the increase. So, more resources financially is needed.
Because the work that you're doing, that the work that the department needs to do in order to work with districts is labor-intensive. I mean, it's, there's things that need to be done that utilize resources. And perhaps the resources that Dr. Rice referenced earlier that are being used to basically monitor, and essentially, these are my words, I'm not putting words into anyone else's mouth, a duplicative state system, perhaps, in your opinion, could be harnessed or deployed to fill in some of these gaps in resources that we just talked about.
Well, I think there's a temporal issue, and there's a financial issue. That having a second accountability system bleeds time that could otherwise go into supports associated with the first accountability system. So, that's the first thing. And then the second thing is that there are financial resources that are needed. 21F dollars are important. Those are small grants to partnership districts to help them have an impact on their school populations. But additionally, we need to do certain things at the local school district level, reducing class sizes for early elementary children to improve their literacy and numeracy skills. We need to have tutoring for young people, mentoring for young people. We need to expand GSRP. All of those cost money. Every one of those elements has a financial cost. And I might add that the temporal cost associated with a second accountability system is not just a temporal cost to the department, but it's a temporal cost to every LEA in the state of Michigan, all 835 of them. It's a temporal cost, Lisa Hands connect to the 56 ISDs in the state because it bleeds their time. And so, you know, you just can't run multiple systems and not have an impact on the resources, temporal or financial, of educators in support of young people.
I think that is the extent of my questions, and thank you.
Very good, thank you. We're to President Albridge, Vice President Pugh, Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pritchett.
Very briefly, just, I'm glad that Board Member Lipton mentioned the dual accountability systems. Just as a reminder that this board was vehemently opposed and bipartisan, in a bipartisan manner, absolutely opposed to having an A-through-F grading system for our schools. And come January 1st, there's going to be a whole crop of new legislators who I think might be willing to hear from the State Board of Education Legislative Committee that it might be time to eliminate the A-through-F accountability system in Michigan.
Thank you very much, President Albridge, Vice President Pugh, Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pritchett.
Yeah, I was thinking that should be our next legislative agenda item.
Okay.
Look forward to that. But just a few questions. I recall when we first started the partnership districts, and it seems like the whole community was at the table. And I was just wondering, how are we at least engaging the boards? And I think that was on slide 18. Is that the very, that's the agreement meeting and the required attendees? And I guess my question is, when the announcement around schools that were added to the partnership list went out, then board members could be learning there? That's a question.
It sounded like a question, but I'm having trouble bringing it into consciousness. Can you rephrase it for me?
So, how are board members being brought into this partnership agreement? So, I recall when we first started partnership districts because I was a community member that was able to be at the table, and I remember boards being there. But looking at slide 18, it doesn't look like that's the case.
I think Dr. Pearson can speak to that, yep.
So, we are hopeful that board members will participate in some of the meetings that we're going to be holding. We have more meetings for intensive district per month, less meetings for fundamental districts that are identified due to grad rate. That's going to be a relationship between the superintendent and the board to determine how many board members are going to attend. Are they going to attend all the meetings, some of the meetings? How are they going to stay abreast of the information in the partnership agreement as it's developed? Because they're an integral part, and I think they need to understand what it is, what it means to be a partnership district, what are the components that are going to be written into the partnership agreement so that we do raise student achievement? So, we're hopeful, but I did not want to say board members are required to attend partnership district meetings as we write the agreement, because I didn't think, I thought that overstepped my bounds. But we're working with the superintendents, hopefully, that they will be board members present. And then for PSAs, some of them have board members that might want to attend. They also have authorizers. So, we're pushing a little bit more that the authorizer should attend some of the meetings and understand the components that make up the partnership agreement when they're written.
If I can also add, at the time that partnership districts were announced, we gave the superintendents a heads-up so that they can let their board members know. So, it's really the responsibility of the superintendent of the district to make sure that the board know. I remember when I was a partnership district leader, one of the first things I did was to call my board president to let my board president know, hey, we're about to get this designation. I think you should know. This is our plan to move forward.
Yeah, and I guess being there at the first round of partnership districts, it was community, you know. The community was a part of the partnership. And of course, the boards were there at that table as well as other partners. So, I guess that part has kind of like, is not there?
No, if I could, I think I want to distinguish between meetings that take place once a month or a couple of times a month, and the quarterly meetings. The quarterly meetings, you're going to have a board representative at a quarterly meeting or in every six-month meeting. But if you're meeting every two weeks in a school, if you're going into a school every two weeks, you're working with administration on that school. When you do quarterly meetings, though, when you're doing the broader meetings with community members and the like, you should have board representation at that board, at that table. There's no doubt about it. Our concern, though, is our ability to cast that net. We don't have the authority to dictate that. We can suggest it, but we don't have the authority to mandate it. The mandating in the signing of the agreement, yes. The mandating in the meeting attendance, no. And we run the risk of working against our efforts to improve public school education because we could end up being the subject of a board member's schedule, for example. There's some boards that will say, well, we want all seven board members there. And now you're working to schedule a public meeting around a partnership district agreement meeting. So, we're trying to run a balance between having board involvement, number one, and not making it a public meeting, number two. There will be, I think, extensive board involvement, particularly in the traditional public school district, partnership districts. If I could, there are 54 partnership districts. And approximately 60% of them are public school academies. And approximately 40% of them are traditional public school districts. And I feel pretty strongly that for the traditional public school districts, you'll have, at the barest minimum, the representation of the board president at all of these high-point meetings. I can't speak to what will be with the 31 or 32 PSA partnership districts. I'm looking forward to seeing if that's the case. I would hope that their board presidents would participate as well.
Or the authorizer, yes.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, there are 33 PSA partnership districts and 21 traditional districts that are in round four.
Thank you, thank you for the amendment.
Yeah, I guess I have more questions on that, but we can talk. Because, and I, what I, I'm thinking about some of the supports that come in are from, you know, you're thinking about community and how community provides those supports. The other thing is like, some of the schools that were added have interim superintendents. I mean, so the continuity there, that's concerning for me as far as who's a part of the meeting. So, I would love to talk.
It's a concern for me, too.
Talk about that. When it comes to the 32 schools who met exit, can those be named? And can those schools be called out? And are they, how many are back in? You probably said that, but I didn't. Because some who met the criteria went back in.
So, are you looking for us to name them now or at a later time?
Now is better.
We don't have, unfortunately, we don't have that list with us at this moment, but we can.
We'd be happy to share it with the board in Board Brief. Not a problem, yes.
I can say out of, for Detroit, for example, they had 56.
You have to speak up, old ears.
Sorry, Detroit, for example, there were 56 schools in the first round, and we now have 25. So, we exited 31 of those 56. We have 25, 20 of them that are repeats and five new ones. But we did exit a lot of schools out of Detroit.
Okay, I'll look forward to that. And then those who, those schools that closed, like what was the story behind those?
Sometimes it was financial. You talk to PSAs, I mean.
Well, there were
There were a couple of There were a couple of traditional districts that closed. They had one school in the agreement, and they closed that school during the course of the agreement.
As a result of?
The district deciding that that was the best move for the district, with maybe it was declining enrollment, and it could have been, or other factors.
Right, sometimes it's the PSA authorizer that makes the decision.
And I'm sorry, so were most of those 32 schools PSA?
That closed?
Uh huh. 32 buildings closed, or?
A number of them were PSA.
A number of them were PSAs, but I don't know how many.
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't have that.
We'll get you, we'll get you a list of the exiters as well as the reasons associated therewith.
Yes.
What are the questions?
Maybe the day after the announcements of the school closing, there I saw where some school, not, I'm sorry, not school closing, but the schools that went into partnership or fell within one of the three. And it was interesting because some schools, it was like doomsday. And then I remember reading one story where this district is getting extra support. And that was interesting to me because that always is one of our concerns when, you know, when we're making these decisions. And because that then can drive schools' parents to take their children out of schools when we label these schools in different ways. I mean, I don't know that there's anything that we could do there, but I mean, I just, you know, as we're talking about labeling A to F, it, you know, I just, that was just intriguing to me to note that, again, there are those schools who can put this in the media, and it's a good thing, and then other schools put it. And it's just, everything's falling to hell in a handbasket. I know the conversation that we had last month was a good conversation around the additional supports that we can provide. But I guess if there's any way that we can help to explain, you know, what this means for districts.
So, I think this is a really good point, and I think it would be good to pause there and just reflect upon that point for a moment. There, the context at the end of 2022 is very different from the context at the beginning of 2017, as you well recall, because you were very much in that 2017 context. That context in 2017 was a blaming, it was a shaming. It was in the context of a school reform officer that was operating outside of the law. That wasn't simply my opinion, although it was my opinion. It was the opinion of many people. It went into court, and the lawsuit would have been successful but for the fact that the governor walked back the rogue action of the then-school resource officer. This is a different context almost six years later. We are not blaming, we are not shaming. We are looking to support, we are looking to work with LEAs, with ISDs, State Department, all together in support of young people, particularly as we emerge from a pandemic. It's a more difficult moment because of the pandemic, on the one hand. It's an easier moment, on the other, because we have more resources. And we have a local superintendent, Superintendent Gibson, who's going to be speaking with us in just a moment, who's going to share a little bit of a different context now than existed six years ago in her district from the perspective of human resources. Because you can't get it done without the troops, without the teachers. Amen, Ms. Garcia? So, I share that with you, Dr. Pugh, because we're not trying to vilify here. In fact, we're trying to do just the opposite. How you choose, as a local superintendent, to contextualize this for your community is your business. But I would say respectfully to any local superintendent, there is nothing about this identification that changes student achievement one way or the other. It's your response that changes student achievement. It is not the designation itself, it's the response. We're not blaming, don't you self-flagellate. Don't you self-criticize. Do the best you can to improve with the help of your ISD, with the help of the State Department. Let's improve what we can for young people. But let's not necessarily get mired into, you know, blame and shame. We need to improve student achievement substantially across the state. There's no doubt about that. But it doesn't get better by vilifying public educators and public school children. So, anyway, I just share that. Let's pivot on, if we could, Dr. Pugh, to Mr. McMillan and to Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Just as a reminder for us, the, you know, the Just as a reminder for us, you know, the school index, 63% of it has to do with the assessment, the state assessment. What subjects, again, are those, is the assessment that would go into that 63%?
English, language, arts, and math.
Okay, just those two. So my main question, and I think I've always, or I've always said for the last six years, that this is, this area is probably one of the most important, if not the most important thing that I think the state board does, is help schools. And if I summarize, to summarize your presentation, schools get into, you know, schools get into this accountability system, we help them, and then they get out. I mean, that's kind of been, you kind of explained the mechanics of it. My question, and I don't think it's the first time I've asked it, is, you know, how much of the funding and resources go towards focusing on getting the kids to do better on the test for these two subjects? I guess I'd like to know, and I would, I always hope that we could, there's a lot of flexibility, a lot of creativity, a lot of sharing of this, if there is creativity and flexibility, in not making it so it's just about those two subjects and just about tests. Because as I brought in Young Zhao back in 2017, and, you know, a lot of good education is just getting kids passionate about learning. And they may not be very passionate about math or, you know, English language at the time. Or, as he said, you could force every kid to read by third grade, but a lot of them won't like it if you're going to force them to. So, you know, some of them may take a little bit longer to get to a level in some of these subjects that we would like for them to be when they exit in 12th grade, to be able to manage and be in society. But, you know, there may be, they may love, or get a love for schooling or education through some other subject. And so if we are, you know, I'm hoping that a school can put resources towards other subjects and not just these two. And helping kids become passionate about learning, whether or not it ups these two, you know, gets them better in the assessment or not. So that's kind of my main question, is how much flexibility, sharing these flexibility, creativity that schools have that may not be focused on the assessment.
So let me take that question, because I think it's an important question. In the last 20 years, there's been a narrowing of the curriculum because of No Child Left Behind, Moving Into Race to the Top, and then subsequently the Every Student Succeeds Act. It's been a pernicious narrowing of the curriculum. You've pointed it out, Young Zhao has pointed it out, I've pointed it out, others have pointed it out as well. It is not, it is not helpful to public education, or for that matter, any form of education, to narrow curriculum the way we've done it in the last 20 years in the country. I will tell you that that narrowing of the curriculum has been more substantial in the education of working class and poor children in the country than it has been in the education of middle-class and upper-middle-class children. The education of the latter groups has been largely unaffected by the perniciousness of NCLB and its evil spawns. But the same is not true for the education of working class and poor children, which has been adversely affected by NCLB and has led to a narrowing of a curriculum. I don't think it manifests itself so much in terms of test prep, although I know that there are people that disagree with me. I think it manifests itself rather in terms of the most stultifyingly boring ways of approaching education in school. A narrowing of science, a narrowing of social studies, both of which help add to a child's literacy development. A teaching of language arts, often devoid of the teaching of writing. A narrowing which I think has its own deleterious impact. So I think that it's really not so much a function of test prep as it is the thinking that if you want to teach children to read, you just focus on English language arts and McNuggets of reading. Whereas there are all sorts of young people, what do they want to read? They're children, they want to read science, they want to read social studies. They don't want to read about Junie B. Jones and the yucky blucky fruitcake or a series of unfortunate events, or. They're not interested in the fiction, they're interested in the nonfiction. And by narrowing our curriculum from four or five core areas to two core areas, and then a narrowing still within that has not been helpful to us. So I would, Mr. McMillan, I'm not going to put a percentage on this, simply to acknowledge, though, that what you are saying is very much a part of the history of the last 20 years of American public education.
Oh, I agree. And so I would just ask, I'm envisioning this first meeting or the first several meetings at a school or a district that just got into the system, is the, okay, how are we going to get these grades up? Or, you know, is that, is that the focus? Or is it the focus, you know, here's what some schools have done that's kind of innovative to get some passion going? And, you know, I mean, is it broader? How broad, can it be really broad and say, you know, that it's not just going to be focused on these two areas?
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, for the question. I'm going to respond, I'm going to add to what Dr. Rice said. It's when this team came together to figure out how we can best support schools districts, this team was very adamant about making sure that we address the root of the problem. So it may be all of that. It may be how do we get grades up? It may be how do we look at social emotional? It may be how do we address children's mental health? It may be looking at why students are not attending schools so that they can come to school and those students can learn. It may be focusing on math and reading. It may be a myriad of options or opportunities. So we are very flexible in making sure that we address the specific need of that specific school building to increase achievement for those students.
And just to note, because I, 100% right, but you and I were trading emails late last night. And among those are ideas around engagement. That we believe that education should be joyous. It's to Lynda Darling-Hammond's presentation before the Continuous Improvement Conference, Dr. Chapman, in October. The importance of belonging, joy, a sense of connection in your school community. We think all of that is critical. And we think children seeing themselves in their literature is exciting. Diversity in literature, we think comprehensive history instruction is exciting. Children seeing themselves in their history. We think that opens up a passion, a joy, an excitement, the ability to research. So I think this, you know, this whole issue of schools being more than Dickensian nose-to-the-grindstone sort of work, I think it is absolutely right. And I think we have unwittingly, in trying to be heavier with our kids and trying to generate higher student achievement by being heavier with them, I think we've turned them off, in a lot of ways, to education. And I see, you know, Dr. Pritchett, longtime educator, shaking her head, yes. And I think others feel the same way. Schools should be fun. It doesn't mean it should be ineffective, but the fun helps the effectiveness. If kids are excited and engaged and joyful, they're going to do better. And we ought to be all about that and a bag of chips. Yeah, anything more?
No.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett.
I am good, my colleagues have done a nice job. I have some questions.
All right, thank you very much. Anything, Ms. Tilly, for the benediction?
To piggyback on that conversation. That's why I'm big on project-based, self-directed studies, where you actually get a chance to pick out what they want to do, what they want to work on. And it makes it more fun for them. They're loving to learn, not just learning or not being forced to learn. And a great example of that is when I went to a model school in, with NASBY in Nebraska, the zoo, the zoo academy. They had the project-based, self-directed studies, and they had it where different ages were in one classroom. I don't think that just because you turn six, you should go into first grade. Education should be tailored to the child. Everybody's not going to be on the same pace, everybody doesn't want to read the same thing. So I, and I was hoping with COVID that we would be able to take a step back and be more innovative and change some of those things. Unfortunately, I don't see a lot of that happening. But once, so I wanted to piggyback on that. And I also wanted to, so Dr. Pugh had made a comment about the 32 schools closing. I was going to ask about that as well. And in the count of schools for 21 and 22, those schools, those 32 schools that closed or that exited are not included in those numbers, correct? In the count of schools for 21 and 22? They're not, okay. The numbers jumped for the ATS from 2016 to 2017, to the 2017, 2018 year, from 5 to 60. Why, that's a.
There was a technical reason where the initial year where you saw that 5, we essentially had to redo that. So that was the five that were identified in the first year. It was sort of a do-over. The U.S. Department of Education said we had interpreted the calculation, required calculation incorrectly. So the 60 is sort of the expected number. And you see that has stayed the same. It was the way that we were treating, if I recall correctly, subgroups for that.
Okay. Looking at the other numbers, I don't see a lot of drastic changes. So I wonder how effective the support. I mean, it's definitely needed, but I'm wondering how effective it is. And are there any opportunities to improve the support?
So thank you for that question. One of the things the team has brought forward is a change in how we support schools. So through the Office of Partnership Districts, Dr. Pearson and his team has divided the level of support so that we can concentrate that support on the most neediest school districts with schools that have, that are in need of comprehensive support and improvement. So that's when he talked about the three levels of fundamental, intensive, and essential. I probably got the order wrong, but he divided it up. And so that his team will provide more intensive support to the most neediest schools and then fundamental and essential to the rest. Also, new this year is the Office of Educational Support. In the past, we have not provided support or bifurcated supports between two offices. This time we will. So we will be providing two things. One, more intensive support to schools that need it, and more support overall to more schools who have been identified as comprehensive, in need of comprehensive support and improvement. And the last point I want to make is because this is measured on the bottom 5%, there will always be the bottom 5%, no matter how much achievement is going on each year. So there will always be a number of schools identified in the bottom 5%.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cornell, Ms. Tilly. Any other questions for the good of the group? Hearing and seeing none, thank you, presenters. It's 11:28. We are going to move on to our late morning show. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is Presentation on Innovation with Educator Preparation Providers. Both Northern Michigan University and Saginaw Valley State University feature residency programs developed in collaboration with pre-K-12 school districts to meet staffing needs across multiple regions of our state. Michigan's educator preparation providers have developed these programs to meet the diverse preparation needs of districts and educators. And as a strategy to address Michigan's educator shortage, one of the goals of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Sean Kotke, Interim Assistant Director, Office of Educator Excellence, Michigan Department of Education, Dr. Joe Lubig, Interim Dean, who's going to be joining us virtually from the College of Health Sciences and Professional Studies and Associate Dean, School of Education, Northern Michigan University, Dr. James Tar, Dean of the College of Education, Saginaw Valley State University, and Ms. Christina Gibson, Superintendent of East Point Community Schools. I would be remiss if I didn't also welcome Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, our Interim Director of the Office of Educator Excellence in the Michigan Department of Education. There will be a PowerPoint presentation, presenters, welcome. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you very much. This is a plan to be the first of a series of presentations on innovations in educator preparation across the state in our efforts to satisfy Goal 7 of the Strategic Education Plan to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. What we'll do today is have a brief introduction to the concept of innovation here, what our efforts have been. Then we will have two guest presentations, one with Northern Michigan University and East Point Schools, and the other was Saginaw Valley State University. So we have supported, and when I say we, the department and the preparation team in the Office of Educator Excellence, implementation of innovative approaches to teacher preparation over the last, I would say, decade. These are not just in service of increasing the quantity of teachers, but also the quality and diversity of our educator workforce. We know that there are significant innovations going on around the state through different educator preparation institutions. And some of our work has been in codifying those innovations to make them the norm. And also in developing some expedited programs to address different populations of teachers, but without compromising on the high standards for teacher preparation that this board has affirmed. There are some common talking points in the field that we hear. Some will say that colleges don't understand the real needs of our schools and children, that teacher preparation is all theory, 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 and then practice. And others will say things to the effect of that there's no college or near university near our school, we don't have access to quality teacher preparation. And hence, we need another preparer out there to meet our individual needs. And today's presentation, we're featuring two providers that offer pathways that are deeply connected to the needs of local schools and stretch across the whole state. And so take these two, what I would call myths, and bust them. And so without further ado, we'll start with Northern Michigan University and East Point Community Schools. And we'll turn it over to Kristi and to Joe, which should be online.
So do we get to see Joe?
I'll move slides for you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kristi Gibson, I'm the proud superintendent of East Point Community Schools. I am a Boomerang Partnership District. We were part of the first identified and wrote and negotiated the partnership district process initially with the support of the MISD, at that time, Dr. G. D. Pritchett's former role, as well as, I'd like to shout out to the MIXL for helping us. At the MDE's Connection Opportunities, six years ago, we were able to begin the pathway of developing a residency teacher program. Because one of the challenges that we have in East Point Community Schools is that we are a launching pad for teachers' first career, and then they move on to higher-paying districts. So we were constantly onboarding and welcoming teachers into our organization, putting in tremendous amount of county-level resources, as well as local resources and Title II funds into developing teachers. And this data here shows you that our efforts were not being maximized at the school district. Because what we have happening is we are training teachers who then could launch to higher-paying school districts in more northern or affluent parts of the county. So it was not helping to sustain work that we were doing. So we launched the residency program, we started paying people and working through the MDE with our partner.
We started paying people and working through the MDE with our partners at OEE, using the permit process to grow our own teachers. Because we felt that we had amazing human beings in our community and in our school district that we could grow to serve children. And because of their connection to the community, it was our aspiration that they would stay with the community. Well, in our first ideation of the partnership with our previous provider, again, we were training people, providing healthcare, paying them. They were providing a service, and then they were leaving our organization. And so what this data shows you is East Point Community Schools' retirement, our resignations, and the staff that we were able to retain. And you can see that we did start to have some progress. Then you have the pandemic year, and then you have the great resignation, which turbocharged our turnover for our most needy and at-risk students. So we started to look for new ways to envision this partnership. Did a lot of research into other programs around the country. Massachusetts has a very strong residency program. And then we started to make some shifts as a local, as you guys like to say, in the field. So we started to work with our union groups, and we negotiated. And we started to create a little bit more tooth and opportunity to stay and encourage teachers to stay with us. So then we had the ESSR dollars. And this infusion of funds really allowed our district to do some amazing work. We were now able to have, we took it to the board. The board approved a half a million dollars for investing in this program. Because we have found a new partner in an unlikely university, Northern Michigan University, we needed a partner that would be agile, flexible, adaptive to the needs that we were having in the field with our teachers and some of the challenges that they were having. Teachers oftentimes learn theoretical construct in a bubble, but when they welcome to the district, reality is hit when a kindergarten student with, you know, all of this stuff that comes out of small-age children, especially this time of the year. And then, then you compound that, and you put 20 of them in a classroom together. These young teachers and teachers are really struggling. So we started to create this wraparound opportunity. Here is our turnover data. And I, I bring this to you because I'm, I'm not proud of our turnover. We haven't figured it out yet, but we're getting there. We didn't create the teacher shortage. We didn't create the accountability system. But we identify problems, and then we're going to find solutions because our kids deserve it. So what we want to see in this data with this impact of the program is that we want to start seeing our bubble, which our bubble year is around five to nine years. Is when teachers will come in, they will stay with our organization. I would be remiss if I didn't say that the work is hard in East Point Community Schools. Our children are coming to us with greater needs now than they ever have before. But it is our goal to get that, those bubble years of like five years. We want to start seeing that retention increase. So we did add teeth. We negotiated an MOU with our partner, the AFT. We have a wonderful partnership with our union, and we do great work together. With our ESSR funds, we are now paying for pathways for teachers. We are taking our traditionally marginalized groups of populations of people, and we are funding their pathway. And Northern Michigan helped us build it. So we now have a paraprofessional pathway to a teacher pathway. We have an elementary pathway we are about to launch. We've got a special education pathway, as well as a secondary pathway. I have security guards who never thought of themselves as worthy considering going into the profession of teaching. I have custodians who have been cleaning floors, who have always wanted to go back to school and could never find a way to financially afford to do this. These are the human beings that I want to develop for our children. We are paying for their education, and in exchange, they are agreeing to stay with our district after certification for three years. So work in our schools, be part of our community. We will grow you, we will train you because we are very good at training teachers. And then we hope that they stay. And because the faces of our district are starting to change, and we are not just a white, middle-class district, that starts to send a different signal to our students because then our students start to see themselves as more than what they might have previously seen. So we are shifting our culture, rebuilding our community trust. And I could not be prouder to work with Dr. Joe Lubig and Northern Michigan University. They have been fierce advocates for the program and the work. And as a Boomerang Partnership District, I hope not to come back to this table and talk about the partnership. But, Dr. Pugh, I would love to answer any questions that you might have about the superintendency and the mindset of the superintendent when embracing dramatic change. And I, I know I'm at like 6.5 minutes, so. Dr. Joe Lubig.
Joe should be joining us online. I don't know if I hear, are we all connected?
Do you want me to call him?
We could give him a text.
There's some, um, there's some trouble with UP connectedness today.
No, Dr. Kotke, is that working?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My settings keep changing every time I flip from one platform to the other. My apologies. So, um, signal is strong up here, Sean. We're all good. Thanks. Yeah, Christina, thank you so much. Joe Lubig, Northern Michigan University. So, uh, in special shout-out to Nanette Hansen, Michigan Teacher of the Year. Thanks for being on the call. So just a little context for NMU. We've been placing student-teachers across the Upper Peninsula for decades. I'm a 1991 graduate. And when I graduated from NMU, we were placing student-teachers in other countries and other states. But, um, some context for the state Board of Ed. For us, in in-area, student-teaching placement covers 16,000 square miles of the Upper Peninsula and then into Green Bay in Wisconsin. We've been doing distance support, distance education, distance clinical placements for decades. Moving to the online platform actually helped us to streamline that and create a more sustainable system and predictable system for us. So as you can see on the slides, sustainable programs, we have right now examples of sustainable programs at the graduate level. Our Learning Disabilities Program, which is a master's level, ad licensure. And then we work with the Office of Ed Excellence and Office of Special Ed Services at lightning speed, I would add, in under 30 days to get a Learning Disabilities Experimental Program approved. This is allowing us to get initial licensure in learning disabilities and utilize the school placement or residency model for teachers anywhere in the state of Michigan to obtain that initial certification. We're doing the same thing for early childhood. And our early childhood partners are awesome advocates for their field and the children and the adults and those children's lives. So that is a sustainable model we have. And now we have a sustainable model, the Masters of Arts in Educational Instruction, where we were able to get an Improving Teacher Quality Grant to use a residency model to support people with bachelor's degrees in secondary fields to obtain secondary licensure. So we have some good models that we know are sustainable, they're predictable. And the advantage of those three models for me is that all those folks for initial licensure are in courses with practicing teachers who are adding licensure. So we get that additional mentorship and connectivity across regions and across, um, skill levels and abilities and, um, years of experience. And as has been mentioned, that's given us the confidence to now take a step. We figured out a pathway with the Office of Ed Excellence and with East Point helping push us to get a K-5 elementary licensure program. And this would target, uh, paraprofessionals. It would be online, and it gives us a reach anywhere in the state to do an online model to help parapros, custodians, any school employee to obtain licensure. And when we talk to our colleagues, as an example, in Alpena, Michigan, and I call people who are interested, it's, these are people who, they are the insurance provider for their family. So we don't want to remove them from that and put them in greater deficit. We want to really leverage their excitement, their passion, and their energy. Just as the previous agenda item, you were talking about that learning environment for children. It's the same for adults. These are people committed to their communities. And if we can just expand access and model the standards we're helping to develop in our teachers as a program and really consider the equity of access for licensure, that opens us up to a whole new world. We're doing the same thing for CTE, Teacher Certification, and we're now working on statewide partnership agreements. And so I would also add that for our program, this allows NMU more access into more diverse school settings, which makes us better, um, partners in developing future teachers, right? It gives us more insight into those, um, classroom settings and those school settings. And it helps us to get diversity across, um, race, ethnicity, experience, and geographic region. So our focus on rurality and access for people in rural areas is really helping us to be, uh, become better. And we also believe that we're producing and developing quality teachers for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now we'll shift to Dr. James Tar, uh, talk about Saginaw Valley State University's innovations. Yeah, I can move that right over there, I think. So, there we go.
All right, well, good morning, and thank you for the invitation to be here. It's truly an honor. My name is James Tar, and I am the Dean of the College of Education at Saginaw Valley State University. I tell people I am the proud dean of the College of Education at SBSU. And we have so much to be proud of. Among our pride, pride points is our accelerated certification with residency, or ACR program. ACR is a non-degree residency-based program for those who hold bachelor's degrees to become teachers in about one year. Candidates while completing their, uh, program coursework either serve as a, as the teacher of record in a paid residency, or they are the co-teacher with another teacher's in another teacher's classroom in an unpaid residency. This was identified as an experimental program in 2017. We pledged to MDE a target enrollment of 30 in our initial cohort. And bucking the trends of declining enrollments in higher education in this state and many, enrollments in our ACR program have increased every year, and our current cohort has 93 teacher candidates. To date, we have produced more than 300 teachers in our ACR program. The profile of our ACR candidates, they are older and more mature, more responsible in general. They are career changers, they are empty nesters, and they are recent graduates, or they are recent graduates who decided to go into teaching too late to do our traditional comprehensive undergraduate teaching licensure program. We collect a lot of data on our ACR candidates for the purpose of accreditation and accountability. And I can tell you that our candidates in ACR, their performance exceeds or is comparable to those in our traditional comprehensive undergraduate program. I particularly would like to highlight our current initiative, which is a special cohort of ACR in partnership with Saginaw Public School District. This semester, fall 2022, we began running a special cohort for full-time employees of Saginaw Public School District who hold bachelor's degrees and aspire to become full-time licensed teachers. There are many advantages to this program. First, Saginaw Public Schools hired the candidates at the starting teacher salary. So it is a salary increase for those participating in this cohort. Saginaw Public Schools pays the full cost of tuition, fees, books, and the cost of taking the MTTC. Moreover, qualified Saginaw Public School District personnel teach at least some of the courses in ACR. And courses are, are held in Saginaw Public School District's school buildings at times and dates that are convenient to all, typically around the district academic calendar. There are advantages, too, for the candidates. They know their community, they know their district, the culture, traditions of the school. And most importantly, they know their students, where they have worked in the district for several, and in some cases, many years. Candidates in this special cohort increase the diversity of Saginaw Public Schools' teacher population. I can tell you that males are underrepresented in teaching, in, in elementary school classrooms. And, um, black teachers are underrepresented in the teacher population. So you can imagine how elated we are to report that we have two black elementary teacher candidates in this special cohort. Our candidates in this cohort are committed to staying in the community. They are not looking to finish teaching licensure and move to Texas, Florida, or Nevada. They want to stay in Saginaw Public School District. Our next frontier is to expand and run similar ACR programs for two consortium of schools. One in St. Clair County, in St. Clair County, and another of consortium of school districts in the thumb. At the same time, we are exploring a parapro-to-teacher accelerated pathway that honors experience credit and still preserves the integrity of the existing ACR program. Related to that, I would be remiss if I did not, uh, report about the Registered Teacher Apprenticeships. Last month, SBSU began signing agreements with local school districts in the Saginaw ISD to begin Registered Teacher Apprenticeships. These include Bridgeport-Spalding Community School District, Hemlock Public School District, St. Charles, and Frankenmuth School District. The Registered Teacher Apprenticeships build on the residency model and successes of the ACR program in which candidates earn while they learn. And they grow in the district culture in which they are ultimately going to become a licensed teacher. So we are excited about the ACR program and its successes, the special cohort we are running for Saginaw Public School District, and the future, uh, similar cohorts that we will run to meet the needs of districts across the state. Finally, we are excited about this next frontier of teacher apprenticeships. I'm happy to discuss challenges, if time permits, to running our ACR program, but otherwise, I will yield.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we have our contact information for our guests here for, uh, for, for any follow-up information. And we are happy to take questions from the board and comments.
Thank you very much, presenters. Just a note about what Dean Tar said, that it's the new frontier. It's not necessarily the final frontier. Thank you very much, presenters. Board members, any questions or comments for our presenters in this important area? We are talking about the seventh goal of the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, one of the two upstream goals. The upstream human resource goal of addressing, um, areas of teacher shortage. You know, there's been a substantial teacher shortage, and I'm going to be asking Superintendent Gibson a question about that in a few minutes. Ms. Lipton.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you, um, for the, um, presentation. One question I have is, um, given the, at least, um, what appears to be early, uh, success in, in, in building these programs, what are, what are the department's thoughts in terms of, oh, intentionally, um, growing a program like what we've just heard about in other areas of the state where we might specifically see, um, a teacher shortage? For example, so is there any intentionality, for example, in, um, inserting or getting the stakeholders together to put together a program?
Absolutely. We have $175 million to, in grants to grow these Grow Your Own programs that can support these, uh, models. And, and one of our goals in presenting today is to be able to show on a high level across the state that there are models
to show at a high level across the state that there are models at play across the state and in specific regions where, where shortages are acute that can be replicated quite easily. In fact, the ACR program at Saginaw Valley has become the template for other residency-based and expedited programs that, that we've nurtured in the Kalamazoo area, in the Grand Rapids area, in the Grand Rapids area moving further north, and other parts of the state, so.
But just a follow-up question. So in terms of, I'm just sort of curious, it's really more of like where in a timeline, for example, would it be fair to say that a school district might need to sort of put some of the pieces together and then approach the department with, with their, with their sort of idea, or is the department looking to get into this area earlier to sort of say, okay, well, you know, we're seeing that this part of the state has a more significant shortage, we're going to go in and sort of try to pull the pieces together? Or is that just sort of a capacity issue on the part of the department?
Well, we've been doing matchmaking. And so our basic process is the, we've been hearing, we'll hear from districts. So Kristi came to us, and we were able to make matches to help with her partnership with Northern Michigan University. We've done this with other school districts in, in the state and other, other educator preparation institutions. So it's, it's wetting the needs of the school districts with the knowledge base that our team has of, of the programs that are in existence. And then the willingness of our providers to build even more innovative programs to meet individual needs. So if we hear from, say, somebody in the Cadillac area, we can start connecting them with various state. We can start connecting them with some of our schools that have geographic reach over into that area as well to, to, to build a program.
I love that term matchmaking. I think that is just a great way to, to view this type of work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Kotke, other questions or comments? Dr. Pugh.
Just a comment to Dean Tarr. It was over the Thanksgiving holiday, one of the, I shouldn't say children, one of the people who I, who I called my nieces was over. And so she went away to school in Washington, DC, gained her degree maybe in business, and is now one of the students who is, is a part of the, the program. So that's very exciting to see. What was more exciting is that her daughter was telling me that she teaches, she does, she's doing her co-teaching work at her school. So she was really excited about that and talking about how smart her mom is. So it was really good to see. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And that she's returned home, you know.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Tilly, to you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. This is something that we've really been talking about a lot lately. It's a major focus. And I really appreciate also the CTE focus. Wondering, is there a pipeline being created for students that are seniors to maybe go into the teaching profession? Are you guys thinking about developing something around that?
May I?
Yeah.
So Macomb County and the work of Dr. Alicia Fly and Sarah Strobeck has been to increase. There is a CTE pathway that already exists for teacher preparation. It isn't one that a lot of districts have implemented. So we started adding some baby steps to getting to that place with our summer school program last summer. It was a county-wide initiative that allowed young students, high school-aged students, to come and get paid and work our summer program and to start to make those connections. And we had students say, this is absolutely for me. I'm all in. And then we had other students that got to learn very quickly. This is not the pathway for me. What other areas in human service might I be called to? So I think it's about a better alignment of how we help students to identify possible career paths, and also then providing those programs, which are launching pads not only to the classroom, but launching pads to the other services that schools need to be able to provide: transportation, cleaning, clerical. There is a need for all of the areas. And the more that we, what teachers have been remiss in realizing and districts have been realizing is, we have the first touch at, at getting children excited about teaching, because everybody's been at school. And I think that our profession can do a better job of celebrating all of the benefits of education and enjoying those roller coaster moments when children have rapid and amazing success.
Hey, Doc.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so that is definitely a philosophy we're taking up here with all of our CTE partners, and is, experience, the experience from a CTE program matters quite a bit to us. And now with the professional standards revisions and the CTE programs, with those professional standards and high-leverage practices connecting to all the grade-banding standards, that's been a real advantage. And our CTE partners, we're saying, just what Christina said, is what if they don't want to go into teaching? So we're trying to make sure that we revise our program so that the CTE equivalencies to our coursework, we're making those courses general ed courses so that, in addition to ed courses, so that if some student changes, we're not burning up credit hour for them. They don't have to keep restarting, right? Finding those pathways and taking the same philosophy, you know, that, that Dr. Tarr and Christina are talking about with you all there, is we have an obligation to, I think, to use that prior learning credit, that those prior experiences. But if they want to transition to a different program, to figure out a way as best we can to honor that coursework for another discipline. So we're not repeating the same problem, right, that we had initially, bringing them in for teacher ed. And our CTE colleagues are amazing at helping us think that through.
With, one last question. With Northern and Saginaw at the table, do you also have programming for students that they can graduate with an associate's degree? Or are you thinking about doing that type of program?
So from the high school perspective, we have a partnership with Macomb Community College to allow for dual enrollment, where students can earn associate's degrees. It's also amazing how many opportunities lots of our local unions have, like Local 1 and Local 120 have lots of, and those are your food service or your custodians. Lots of our unions offer opportunities for their employee and union members to grow as well. And so, yes, we offer dual enrollment, and we are actively working to encourage our students because of the financial benefit that comes from having coursework completed prior to graduation or the year after.
Definitely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Just a few notes in, in wrapping up for today, and one question. Ms. Gibson, if you, if you would be kind enough, refresh my memory, last year in September versus this year in September, number of openings last year versus number of openings this year? Because I think sometimes when we're in the midst of something challenging like the teacher shortage, that we often fail to note progress.
Right.
And I think perhaps a great opportunity to note progress is to note where you were 15 months ago and where you are, where you were at the beginning of the school year this year as well.
I was in seventh grade math at East Point Middle School last year.
Okay.
I was the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, and our whole cabinet team was subbing in classrooms to ensure continuity of learning for children. I had 43 teaching vacancies. We replaced over a third of our teaching staff. We have teachers, so you wonder why we're back on the partnership district list. And it is because the teachers who have teaching certificates have gone to the places where there is more money and where they perceive that the work is easier. The work is hard in East Point Community Schools.
And this year, at the beginning of the school year, how many vacancies?
I had about eight vacancies this year, but it was a crippling blow. Last year, we closed our middle school for an entire week because we were unable to continue to provide consistent, continuous education to our children because so many teachers resigned and moved on from our district. So we had 43. This year, we started with eight, you know, but I also feel like the little boy in the dam, you know, plugging holes with third-party companies. I've got contracts with Maxim Healthcare, Therapy Travelers, Sunbelt. I mean, you names, any organization that sends us a third-party request that we can find. We've got a huge deficit area in special education with at-risk social workers, psychologists, certified special education teachers. And then we have legislative and legal mandates for caring for these children that are our most needy children, and the struggle is real every day. And right now, the struggle is real because of cold and flu season. And when we don't have substitute teachers to take over classrooms, we have tough decisions as superintendents. My next-door neighbor had to close the district the other day because we didn't have enough teachers. And so that's not very equitable, and it is not very fair. And you are seeing in the state of Michigan principals who are doing work that they never thought they would be doing, principals who have two or three classrooms in the auditorium. So if the state wants to get better, let's start addressing the human capital management system. Thank you, Dr. Rice.
I appreciate that. To that point, after struggling with the state legislature, which arguably was responsible for the creation of the teacher shortage in the state by the underfunding of the profession in the state, after finally getting the attention of the state legislature, not only relative to the teacher shortage, relative to the presence of the shortage across the state, but the need to actually fund rectification of the shortage, we have $575 million this year dedicated specifically for addressing the teacher shortage. While it's not enough, it's a half-billion-dollar start, which is extraordinary. Among that $575 million is $175 million for the Grow Your Own programs, to which you just referred, which we've been pushing on a dime in the department over the last few years. Additionally, within that $575 million is $10 million for the development of CTE instructors within ISDs. Those are two of the four largest elements of that $575 million package. $305 million goes for scholarships or fellowships, and $50 million goes for student-teacher stipends. It's not enough. And as a longtime local school superintendent, 17 years as a local school superintendent, I dealt with the teacher shortage from the local school district level. You can't build a better past, you can only build a better future. And I'm glad that 43 vacancies have become eight vacancies. And here's to a period in the not-so-near future where not only don't you have vacancies at East Point, but you're getting the pick of the litter relative to your teachers in East Point. Grow Your Own programs are critical. They are about matchmaking, Ms. Lipton. I want to be clear about that. We are explicitly matchmaking when we can. Now, others are matchmaking as well, but we're very clearly looking at relationships that make sense among LEAs and ISDs, State Department, and EPPs or EPIs. And Dean Tarr, to, to one thing that you shared about being pleased about having a couple of candidates of color in the pool, we do view this as being about more than simply quantity and quality. We do view this being about diversity as well. 9.8% of our teachers in the states, in the state are teachers of color. That's up from 8.2% six years ago. We've had an 1,167-person increase in, in African-American teachers in the last six years, an increase of 169 Latino teachers in the last six years. So we're moving up. We've got a long way to go before we have a representative teacher population. And then the only other thing that I'd like to do in, in closing is just to thank the presenters. You're, you're leading in a very difficult moment, and we appreciate that. You're on the front line, Superintendent. It's not easy. And while you are trained as a teacher, and while you could arguably do anything in a public school, you cannot do everything in a public school. And it's unreasonable to expect that you or anyone else would do everything. I want to thank you. I want to thank Dr. Kotke, Dean Tarr, Dean Lubig from Northern Michigan University. Thank you all for, for your work. We will be doing a series of presentations before the state board over the next six months on innovation in teacher preparation, innovation and teacher preparation with our EPPs, with our EPIs. It's important work. We want to highlight that work, that great work that's being done at Saginaw Valley State University, at Northern Michigan University, and at other universities across the state as we rebuild our teaching profession. Thank you very much. Board members and community members, it's 12:10. We are in adjournment for lunch until 1 o'clock.